This conference will now be recorded.
Meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm Tom Engelman, Vice President, serving as President today. We have a roll call of the trustees present. Craig?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
Okay. Is that Amanda?
Yes.
Okay. You need to turn on your sound.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
There you go.
Okay, Amanda, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
I can hear Amanda. I can hear Amanda.
She can't hear us either.
I can hear everything.
Yes.
I'm hearing it.
Maybe she should reboot. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Malvika. I can hear everyone. I switched to my phone instead of the computer.
Oh. We can hear you. We can hear you, all of you, but Amanda and I can't hear you.
We can't hear her, and she can't hear us.
So remember, some of these to come up then if they both can't, we can't hear either one. I can hear everyone, but we can't hear them. That's the problem. Amanda's saying, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can hear you all.
Is there something muted here? No, she clearly can't hear. No, she can hear. She can't hear. We can't hear them.
I turned something up. It's Malvika over.
Amanda, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Something's very weird.
Try volume.
She just put the sound, it's breaking it up.
She is trying.
I can hear the computer. I can hear Amanda.
Okay, this is a misread.
Come on, fix it.
And earlier, my email made a noise, it was really loud, so I tried to turn it down, but I didn't.
They can hear.
Well, Malvika can hear Amanda.
Malvika, can you tell us?
We can't hear them.
So they can both hear us.
Aww.
They can communicate via text.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess that's how we're gonna have to proceed.
Sorry.
Okay, well.
One for us, two for none.
That's the Board here, and then we've got several staff members, and we've got Library Director Jeff is here, and our City Council Liaison, and we also have the President of Friends, the library here. We've got all kinds of folks here. First item of business is agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the? Okay, Judith moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All those in favor? Craig?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
Amanda, she votes yes. Malvika? Okay.
Yes.
So we have it, and I vote yes, it passes. Now, we move to public with comment. Don't see anyone for public with comment. Move on. Sports and Communications, Friends.
Just three items from our recent meeting earlier this, well, last week. One, the Friends did approve increasing the programming request to the library from 25,000 to 30,000 starting next fiscal year, early next year. Also, we approved 6K and cost-sharing requests for an author visit, Nick Stone, and the shared programming with Rock Island, I don't understand anyhow. And then also are talking about another speaking engagement with having Art Cullen come in conjunction with the River Action Conference this fall. Which is something, I'm personally involved in that also. Art Cullen is a Pulitzer Prize-winning author from Storm Lake, Iowa. And then finally, the Board is committed to providing some Friends representations at the upcoming parties in the parks, which is kind of a big deal. So I think those are probably the main items anyhow that came out of the recent Friends meeting.
Thank you. Then we move into committee reports. Finance. I guess I will make a little bit of a comment. The budget recap, we're 83% of the way into the year, and our, most of our line item expenses are running right about at that, or a little bit below. So we're doing a good job of controlling that. And I do appreciate the miscellaneous revenue and expenses because that sheet shows all of the various restricted counts that the library has accumulated over the years. And it shows how much is left of the various bracket sources. So that is a good piece of information. Don't think we have anything doing, Amanda? She has no way to, oh yeah, she can text us. Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
She says she doesn't have anything.
Okay. Okay. And, let's see. Advocacy? Malvika?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Director's report. Jeff?
Just a couple of things that I wanted to share or highlight first, the in-service that we were able to do. Having the library closed and then provide that opportunity for staff to come together was very well received. Receiving some survey feedback on that, so we're hopeful that we're gonna get some good information on that. Generally, it was overall very well received, well attended, and we're very fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to come together again, and then to learn and move forward. Really great. The community center is moving along as well. We've had some opportunities for additional public feedback on that, which has been good. Outreach is in full swing, and summer reading as well. The training that we're getting later today is gonna be on summer readings, we'll talk more information about that. And then in terms of service interruptions, just a couple of things for the Board to be aware of. Number one is the road construction at the intersection of the Eastern and 53rd. It's still ongoing, however, at this point it was shifted from being northbound closed to southbound closed. So that's better for us, for the library obviously, because it does facilitate a little bit easier access instead of having to circumvent either a very long way around or cutting through where the gas station is. And then also the orders, our circulation machine at Eastern is down for a couple of issues, and we're actively working on repairing that. But it does slight, slight impact to patrons, just in terms of how they return the items because it is turned off, and then also how quickly we're able to get those back. We do not believe it's had any negative impact on the public at this point, but I think we'll make sure that you are aware of that. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns or comments on anything else listed in the report.
Any questions for Jeff? Did you find you could turn out, was it the public session?
Yeah, there were about 12 to 16 people total. Is that about right?
They did a good job of promoting it. There was a lot of promotion.
There was, yeah. We had some news media coverage. They interviewed a couple city staff, myself, so I think we showed up in a couple different stations. They also blanketed the immediate vicinity of about 500 of the little placards on doors to solicit more feedback. And then we'll be doing a survey shortly as well, and once I get that information, I'll share that report as well, so we can try and get some more feedback on what they'd like to do.
What were people saying at the meeting, just out of curiosity?
There were a lot of questions just about what the purpose is, or what they would do with it.
It seemed like they liked the idea of some sort of gym.
Gym? Yeah, gym. And that, when we did the strategic planning focus groups, that was the number one item that rose to the list as well, some sort of gym space for people to use. There was some conversation about it being detached or attached as well.
Cool.
There are a lot of interesting kind of design options as far as people's feelings on what they like and what they don't like. So we used, for example, one location had a, or one station had a series of images, interior and this series of images of exterior, and then participants were giving a green dot that they can say for the ones they like, and a red dot for the ones they don't like. So that helped the design team in determining kind of what style they want to go. Mostly angular things were not very popular.
It was symmetrical and all.
Yeah. And then there was another station that Lexi ran, for the most part, that was landscaping, very landscaped to pretty much no landscaping at all. So a couple of things like that.
Oh, cool. Is there a set amount of like square footage that can be added on, or not?
Well, the budget for $2.2 million is, they're telling us it's gonna be about 5,000 square feet total.
Okay.
So that's the total amount that we're looking at being able to add. The question is gonna be the details on how that plays out. So for example, if it's attached, we might still be able to utilize the restrooms we currently have at Fairmount Library. And that'll give us more space in that location. However, there's a lot of advantages for it being detached as well.
Because it can be used separately, or opened in the libraries.
Additional libraries, right.
Yep. Yeah, well, this is.
Thank you, Jeff. Council, Maryann?
I have a few things. Not a whole lot different than last time, I guess. We're still negotiating with Canadian Pacific. We haven't heard back on our last round. We do expect maybe something this summer. So that will inform us then, you know, what, and again, I can't talk about the details, but that will inform us of sort of, I think, what, you know, obviously, we're looking at quality of life, access, you know, safety, impact, you know, reducing the impact. So just take that and congeitate on it and. So anyway. And, you know, we're very initial proposal, so potentially impact the library. So that will continue. And I don't know if there's a, the library has a play in this, but yesterday, the regular dream program was announced for 2024, or the upcoming, it's the fourth one, I guess 2023. And it's most of the area south of Locust and from about Telegraph over to about Bridge. So if you know people in those areas, this is a $20,000 grants for owner-occupied properties, exterior repairs. We've done about 137 over the last three years. There is money in there for families whose income falls into the load of moderate income, but there's also unrestricted money in that $900,000. So staff, as they always do, will be working with the recipients. If anybody's interested, get your application. You don't have to have bids and everything. It's a three-week application process, so it's very quick, ends, I think, May 6th. So please let folks know about it if you're in the area or know someone who's interested. Also, before the City Council and impacting, potentially impacting downtown, is the, we voted in the last cycle on selecting, we had, the Main Street Landing, the potential destination playground, which is proposed for Main Street Landing. And the thing that the Council voted on was to engage a firm to design a proposal, not to accept whatever the firm does, but to engage them on this. It's, there were some, you know, not everybody is excited about the idea of this on Council, so you need to be aware of that. But it is part of the planning of that area, included a playground area, and it is a kids' playground area, and the goal is to make it, you know, a destination-type place, you know, that is, that's just for people in town, but something that will draw people to the riverfront. The Sisachi is the group that was engaged to do the design, and that was after many, an RFP had been put out last winter and received back, and then ran different rounds of reviewing. They've done a lot of riverfront parks, parks that flood, things like that. These were, and they have a pretty stellar reputation. So we had, they're very good people who were in the final group, and I did sit in on those, but they're very impressive. So in any case, this is not to accept, this doesn't mean the work is going ahead because the State Council then has to do the final yes, we'll spend the money on this. This comes at a time, and I cannot remember the acronym or whoever it is that the State is using, but there is a, the State is launching a program that's sort of like the Vision Iowa was a few years ago. It's something like $37 million, and it can have multiple parts, and there's gonna be like one small town and one large town, and they're looking kind of along the river. So, you know, riverfront communities. So something like this, and other things can tie, could tie into this. If we could become a player in that, in getting those dollars, it could have the kind of impact that River Vision did, which is what brought the Figgie, I think, the Redstone, you know, all that redevelopment was all part of River Vision, if any of you remember those days. So this is the first time there's been anything like this in a while. So I don't know all the details. It'll take months and months for that to go, but, so there's other things, you know, kind of cooking as well. So you'll probably be hearing more about that. And I, you know, and we have really not had a presentation on it either, but I know that it didn't launch last week. They opened applications, but they'll be taking them probably through most of this year. I mean, this is big visioning stuff. Big, big. So I think we're real positioned, because we've been working a lot on what are we doing downtown, what are we doing with the riverfront. So I think we, you know, I think we are, it's not gonna get us flood protection probably, not that kind of thing, but it's more driven by economic development and tourism and things like that. So I do think all the things we've had to deal with in the last few years helps us with this a little bit. So we will see. You'll hear more. Let's see, what else? The other thing is, of course, party in the park. The first one is 6:09, it was 3:00 in June, 6:09, 6:16, and 6:30. And I know you guys will be great partners, and we're looking forward to that. And there's really nothing else I have right now unless someone is, has any questions.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Is there any kind of brochure, or flyer, or anything that could, I could take to people to help them understand and explain the dream?
Yeah. If you go online, you can download it. There's, if you go to, go to the city of Davenport and type in "dream project" in the search, and the application is all online and everything, and it's very, it's very simple, explains it well. The application is very simple. It's, you don't have to have bids and stuff to, they'll go through that as they select the people.
Because I think pretty much everyone in my neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, they're really pretty colorful things, and you can download them in front of mountains. Yeah. So it's very.
And the application is due June 6th?
The deadline is June 6th. I would not wait until June 6th. So if they're interested.
I gotta get right on this.
They need to get on it, and they don't have to have like every single thing, and every single, this is the amount, or any bids, or anything like that.
Just the kind of gross.
Yeah, yeah. This is what we're trying, yeah, exactly. It's pretty self-explanatory. Yeah.
I don't, we got it before.
So it's bad. So, and it goes quickly.
And there are, and there is money that isn't in cash?
That's correct. In fact, it's $900,000, and so I think, I think, like, I think it's $400,000 that's CDBG, and the rest is unrestricted. I think it's $500,000 that's unrestricted, so. And they do have, in the past, set aside, if you're looking for people coming in your neighborhood, they have set aside money for new, within that, for new homeowners, people new to the area. And it doesn't go to the purchase, but, you know, so they kind of set aside a piece, and that money tends to stay around a little longer, so if you're trying to bring people into your neighborhoods, let them know about this program. And usually, those dollars don't get allocated out, you know, in the first round, because the last, and in fact, the last dollars didn't get allocated until February of, for the last year till February of this year. There's not a deadline. They don't just say, here's your money. It's not the way it works. It's a grant, but the city works with you. They pay the contractors, which means, you know, homeowners are not left to the mercy of a contractor, not finishing the work and all of that. They don't deal with any paperwork except, you know, what they're doing with the, you know, except what they're doing with the city. So it's a very curated experience, sort of, and the staff works closely. So it's a little, and. Before some of these get done, given the timing, and. In 12 months. So there's much more. You know, some of the programs. And much relationship based with the city.
It sounds very user-friendly.
Yeah, right. That's what they tried to do.
Does the CAC oversee that?
No. No, it's not done.
Is it Heather?
It's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a C-bid. So, yeah, no, it's not, the dollars are allocated, but the CAC does not have, they do not select, the staff selects the places that are chosen, so.
Is it open to landlords and rental?
No, it's not. This one is not. No. No. We had a, we had a Dream Plus program that did have dollars for rental, but that was ARPA money. That was a targeted area of this same area, but in that area is not eligible for the regular dream, and we did have landlord money, but not in this, because it's not, it's not sufficient to do that, so. Okay. Sorry, it takes a moment.
Thanks, Maryann. And congratulations on.
I guess I'm paid, and I like it.
Congratulations on potentially getting the railroad to move that quickly. I mean, they're like the lights, getting them to move that fast.
They say they would.
Oh, wow.
Well, the thing is.
I just, we think they would.
They would like to have a city say, yeah, we support what's happening. We know that. But that comes at a cost.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
It should.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. So next item of business is new business. We have discussion of bylaws and amendments. Hopefully, everybody got those. There was, Steve had done some discussions with Brian Hayer, the Assistant City Attorney, about the bylaws. Partially, this was directed because of the idea of doing a code of ethics, and Brian had suggested keep that as a separate document. And so the bylaws and etc. in front of us reflect that. So I'll open it up. Is there any discussion from anyone?
Do you want a motion?
Well, we're not, typically, we discuss it in one meeting and then approve it on the following meeting. So it will be on next month's meeting to approve them.
There's just these two red line changes, is that?
Yeah, they're just, I don't think they're very major amendments. They have to deal with the terms of office.
I guess it's more like, that terms law.
Right.
How did they come up with six-year terms?
That, I'm not sure if that is state law. I'm not sure where that six-year term came from. I think part of it is driven by the idea to get our terms out of the political realm, so that we're not in sync with the two-year terms of Council members. So that, you know, in any one year, you're only gonna replace a couple of trustees. You can't replace the whole board.
The statue, the six years?
I think, I think then the Iowa code, they have that set for the six years, and then the city of Davenport has codified that as well, for the six years. And then we turn, have it in the bylaws to six.
But the term limit, limitation is self-imposed by the Board, because at one time, we did not have term limits. Any other discussion on the bylaws? Okay, we will, that will show up on next month's agenda as an action item. And now we have a motion to approve Policy 2.7, which is apparent, personal appearance. Jeff, would you like to address that?
So this is essentially the dress code policy for the library, and what we are hoping to do is a couple of things. Number one is try to simplify the process, and then number two is to address our outreach and outdoor events. So we're trying to make it a little bit more clear for staff on what those expectations are. We looked at a variety of other local libraries as well, including Beddorff, Holley, and Rock Island, for examples, to see where in line with those same expectations. So overall, the red line version that you see before you, we felt was, a lot of it was duplicative, and we generally state the provisions and the policy about what the expectations are, just to be professional, and then we list the unacceptable items. So it's a simplification of that, and then additional outdoor. So just for an example, a couple of things that are different, essentially, a lot of it is still the same, but a couple of things that are different are capris would be allowed, and those are kind of short pants. That's what most, most of our staff. They're very, they're very, very, very happy.
Angels don't have to be covered.
Yeah, so to be able to wear capris.
I can't wear capris, ladies. You can't wear capris, don't.
Right, yes. And then open-toed shoes as well, with the exception of flip-flop, fonge-style, and also an exception for assistant caretakers, caretakers, and van drivers, because we want them safe while they're out and about. Those are two big changes. And then we also have a couple of other additional things that we'd like to add in addition to what's currently listed on the version you have, based on additional feedback from the supervisors, Steve. And that's number two, under the guidelines. We wanted to clarify that ID cards need to always be worn. So we'd add a statement in there that says ID access cards are to be worn while interacting with the public, essentially, because that is the defecto ID for anybody that we're interacting with, the public. And the way it's currently written, actually, plus this version doesn't make that clear.
Okay.
And then the other part was under number five, the final bullet point on page one, we'd eliminate the word fundraising. So blue jeans, except for every Friday and Saturday, and staff association events, or making clear it's not just related to fundraising.
Was there any consideration given to letting the staff wear jeans, period? Just done.
Yes, so currently, staff can wear jeans on Fridays and Saturdays. And then also, staff can wear jeans when it's a staff association event.
No, no, I see that. I mean, I can see that. I just meant letting them wear jeans.
Oh, like, all the time?
Done, done, done. We can wear jeans. Capri jeans, even if we wanted. How about ankle length? That's a new thing. It is regular ankle length, but it's bad.
Yeah, we have had conversations about that, but felt it was a little too casual for our environment to have the blue jeans all the time versus, instead of just the weekends.
You know, having talked to the staff in years past about what would make them happy, I'm just saying, it would make them happy, and I, I don't, I don't know. Is that also, just to be, I'm just curious, consistent with the other libraries, like, they don't allow jeans either, except on these specific days.
I don't know about the local, I know generally, most libraries.
Why is Friday a day like you can wear jeans, but on Monday it would be, it would be too casual? I mean, I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I don't know the answer, but a lot of businesses have, they have a casual Friday type thing.
I get it, yeah.
So that's probably where, that's probably where it came from, but.
Yeah, no, I know that, you know.
What about the jeans, are they kind that have all towels in them and stuff? Is that good? I don't like that.
You know, that's a lot of people that look like. Well, I don't think that would be acceptable with your dress code, period. I mean, you know, it's not like jeans equal being, you know, sloppy. It just, it's another kind of backstory, right? I don't know. So you were gonna pop into something. Oh, you had asked about the other libraries. Um, I know Beddorff allows jeans throughout the week, Moline, only on Friday, Saturday. I don't remember Rock Island.
It's way too very clear.
Malvika, what about at your library?
Students.
We are not allowed jeans at all.
Type.
They don't allow jeans at all.
Have to type.
What?
That's what she was saying.
Well. She's gonna type. I think she got the message.
We're not allowed jeans at all.
Why didn't we added the jeans on Fridays, Friday, and
With, since we've already started the discussion, do we have a motion to approve the policy in front of us?
A motion, so motioned.
I move to approve, uh, no, discuss.
Moved by Sylvia, seconded by Craig. Um, any further discussion?
Can I, well, this is from experience of managing a staff of young journalists. Uh, and maybe this isn't a thing anymore, but I guess you could call them crop tops or belly, they used to call them belly shirts. We had to actually put that in our dress code, because people were showing up with crop tops.
I thought that was somewhere in here.
No, sleeveless tops. But you could say sleeveless or crop tops, which is the, that's a, you might not want people going in those.
That's a good point.
I mean, they do know.
It does say skin tight or revealing clothing.
Yeah, that's, I think it was covered by, uh,
It does say, skin tight or revealing.
Like, if you can see middle skin, perhaps, no.
And there's the topless top.
What's that?
The topless top? What's it sound like?
I guess, I would hope that, I would assume that, uh, virtually all the staff already feel like this is a professional position, which requires a certain level of professional appearance.
Uh, don't, don't bank on it.
No, yeah, very young.
I mean, I, I understand that you have codified some things. And, um, we may have to revisit this, but, um, so we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, policy, uh, two point seven, personal appearance. Any other discussion? I'll call a roll. Judith?
Yes, Judy will call it.
Joe?
Yes.
Um, Sylvia?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
She nodded. Amanda?
Yes, she says yes.
All right. So, and my vote is yes, so that passes.
Thank you very much. That is going to be very, very, very appreciated.
My vote is fine right now. We're in this pack.
It doesn't apply to the board. I'm gonna come in a crop top.
And belly shirt and weight cut off.
Rip jeans. That's gonna be a thing for me.
Thanks Sylvia. Hey, you have your cell phone in that case.
The next, moving into old business. I'm, um, a motion to approve policy, excuse me, four point six, leave of absence, family medical leave act, MMLA. So this is something we discussed last month. Joe has moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
Sylvia, second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Sylvia?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
Yes. Amanda? On here.
She says yes. Says yes for the top.
Joe?
Yes.
Judith?
Yes.
I vote yes. That passes. Okay, good. And now we have the code of ethics.
Did Anna fill this out last month?
That's not what this is.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a separate financial interest disclosure.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, this would be a separate thing for discussion on whether or not the board would like to have a code of ethics that they would prescribe to.
This would be separate from by law. Right, yeah, this, this would be an item that at least in the executive board, when we discussed this. And the idea was we would have new, new trustees sign this, that they agree that this is the code of ethics that we are going to operate under. Now open it up to discussion.
Tom, maybe you could fill, fill people in on sort of the discussions that we had around it as an executive committee, and why we felt it was important to have it, or to lift up these issues.
Part of the issue of why we came up with this concept, or I should say came up with or sort of adopted this concept, because this is kind of, this is, this is other places do the same kinds of thing. Basically, it started with all of the book banning efforts that are going on around the country. And the concern was that, um, that potentially could affect, I should say affect, affect the board. And we wanted to make, start making sure that people ascribe the freedom to read, that people are free to read whatever they want to read. And that is part of this, and most of this is basically geared to that.
Yeah, I think it's, um, you know, just helping board members to understand that part of being a board member is agreeing that this is a true thing. If you don't believe in the right to read, then probably this isn't the board for you, you know? Um, and, and just, you know, the civility of, um, you know, conversation and all that, that's what, you know, like. I mean, obviously, everybody here is on board with all that. We would need this for us. Truly, we don't need it for us. But we're not doing this for us. You know, we're doing this, I think, to just, you know, be more thoughtful about our role in our community. Does that make sense?
And, and also part of it is that, um, we as the board are sort of the backstop for the professional staff. When they get a complaint from someone in the public about a book that that particular person doesn't like, and that person explores the options of getting it removed, and they potentially get a no from the staff. Public can obviously come to us as, as a next level. And we need to make sure that we are protecting, or in the, protecting the staff when they make those decisions.
But have it written now.
Well, yes.
And Steve did a lot of research, actually, and talked to quite a few libraries, um, about this. And, and there, there have been some kind of interesting situations that have occurred on, you know, even in Iowa City. I, you know, and so I think this helps to maybe mitigate some of the potential problems. I mean, it seems to me it's just a matter of time. From what I see going on in the world, it's just a matter of time before we are challenged with, with some of these, you know, ideas. And so this helps us to just kind of have a more solid basis on which we are here.
Yeah, I'm assuming there's also, is there a process within the, if someone objects, do we have a, a, um, policy for staff that protects staff, so, and, so does it say, hey, take your problem to the board of trustees? Or something that says, here's the, here's the process, so they're not, that's in place already, so they, that's, okay, good.
Correct, yeah. We have a current policy that outlines a reconsideration process. So generally what will happen with that is that we'll request that person that's complaining about a particular item in the collection to then complete a form, and then that form comes to the library director, and then we have an internal committee of four people that will review, um, that item, and then use our professional judgment on whether, um, based on the merits on their complaints, whether it should be in the collection, it should not, if it needs to be in a different collection within our overall collection, because those are legitimate concerns as well. And it gives, uh, the complainant an opportunity to look at that. Then we'll issue a written judgment within, I think, fourteen days, thirty days, something like that. And then they have the option at that point, if they disagree with the end results, to then come to the board with that information as well. So there's a process in place.
Malvika is just adding that in Iowa City, it doesn't come to the board. And we did discuss that as an executive committee, whether we wanted to continue to have the board be involved at all.
Correct.
And our feeling was, what Tom said, like, we're here to protect the staff.
Absolutely. That one, at that point, they just circumvented the board.
We're, we're, no. Not that we love that idea, but, you know, like, we're here, we backed back, so to speak, and, um, just don't, but there is no recourse after the board. That's it.
But at some point, it's
Well.
That's the way it is.
Unless you go to court. Unless you go to court.
I, yes, you.
Which you, you know, people can do, yeah.
You would always assume that people, especially if there's, if it's coming from an organized group, that that recourse is out there. And so, I mean, it's just logical to assume that it's there. And so, um.
And Steve did say that, that, that in Iowa City, they said, well, the staff are professionals and they know the best. But I think under our system, it isn't that we're necessarily second guessing this, well, I suppose. No, because if the person continued to protest, it would just, it wouldn't be us saying, you don't know what you're doing, staff, let us handle this. It would just be, you've already said no to the person, and we would back you up.
And what happened in Iowa City when, uh, so they, they, you said they circumvented the trustees. Where did they go?
They were in the city council.
Oh, and with the city council, okay, I see. Okay, well, that does, there's no relation.
Right.
And you just skipped the entire process.
And there is no, and there is no, yeah, within this council, there is no, there's no link for that. There's no, there's no link.
So the one, the one link would be the city council would then get rid of board members.
Yeah, that could, yeah, that could happen.
People that they find more politically favorable.
Right, but they, yeah, and that, I mean, that could happen, but.
That's a, that's about it.
No, but the city council cannot get rid of board members. Cannot.
The one, once they're gone, they can assign.
They can, yeah.
The mayor can designate it.
The mayor can appoint.
Yes, right, but, but there's, you, they can't.
They can't just say you're gone.
But they can't do it. It's a referendum. If you want to get rid of a board member in Iowa, you have to have a referendum.
So they're, they're appointed to six-year terms and then reappointed. So when those, uh, reappointments come up, or the appointed vacancies pop up, that's where the point is. Mayor would be able to designate somebody.
Absolutely, yes.
And this, this document would help you as new members coming in, that they would subscribe to this, that they would say yes. That's, I think, the point, right?
But what's good is there, I mean, there is no, in, in our current structure, except for, okay, when, when somebody comes up for reappointment, a mayor could appoint somebody else, there is no, there is no appeal process, formal appeal process that goes to city council.
Well, I don't think it was in Iowa City.
Well, then I don't know why the council heard it.
Well, I don't, I don't know either. And I think I have the story right, I, because we talked about a lot of stuff. But what happened at this meeting is like, the city council was being totally swayed by the people who wanted the books banned, right? They were like, oh, this, yeah.
No, no, actually, it wasn't the city council. It was the board, library board.
Thank you, yes. It was the library and board.
And what, what sort of brought it back
Right, exactly.
to center was their council leaders, who kind of spoke up and said, what the heck are you guys doing?
Wait, yeah, what are you, what are you guys thinking? You've lost your minds now, yeah.
And, and again, I, the way this was, the way this was reported was it was by the librarian, the, the staff people. And they were reporting their impression. So it may not have been, the board was actually going there. They were maybe being empathetic, but not sympathetic.
Yeah.
They might have been saying, they were trying to understand what was being said, but not, but not agreeing with it.
But it don't learn, it becomes representative.
So, all, all that being said, I, I do think having something like this, um, signed by trustees is probably a good thing going forward.
Yes. Do you see anything on here that you think, oh, I don't know if we knew that, or that's a bridge too far, or anything like that? Does it seem pretty reasonable?
I felt like everything was reasonable from the library's perspective, and a lot of this is based on what is currently accepted practice within the state of Iowa, through the state libraries, board trustees document, which they also in turn utilized, I believe, the United, um, Federation, it's the, oh. It was the initiative of ALA, but it was the Urban Libraries Council, the Urban Libraries Council, Freedom Libraries, etc.
It says we're objective in hiring the library.
I don't know about that.
I don't know about that either.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, that will move forward as an action item on next month's agenda? Okay.
Thanks, Malvika.
Okay, thanks, Malvika. The next item on the agenda is vice president's comments. By opportunity to spend regaling with more.
Review everything else.
And I'm not going to.
You go, Tom.
I'm not going to.
Speak into the microphone, let's go.
I'm not going to bore you with a lot more, so we'll just move on. For training, I guess we have something set up for potentially, uh, a little bit on, uh, what the summer reading program is.
Correct. So at this point, I'd like to take a couple of minutes, up to ten minutes, to talk about our summer reading program. Uh, so you can see, uh, some of what that looks like and how it's going to play out. And Casey's going to be bringing up a staff training presentation, uh, that was given by our, uh, and, by our youth services supervisor, and also by our information services supervisor to staff about summer reading for this year. And so we'll go through this, and you'll see some of the, some of what it looks like and that work consistency and film. So the, we have an annual theme as part of the summer reading program. And, uh, this year it is Read Beyond the Beaten Path. Uh, it changes each year to try and keep it fresh and exciting. And it will run this year from June first through August thirty-first. And that's important to note, because that goes a full ninety days, which is a lot of pressure and expectation on staff to be able to provide a summer reading program for three full months. But what it does is it affords us an opportunity to hit students while they're still in school that last week, and then also when they're, um, back in school the last week as well. And that's important, because we found that a lot of students are unable to attend, uh, the library, to actually make it to a Davenport Public Library facility, even with our outreach wheel library and the outreach that we're doing in the community. There still are some students that just cannot make it to the library during the summer. So this enables them to participate in the program, and we're able to get them before and then at the end of the school year as well. And overall, the main goal that we're going for with summer reading is to help prevent that summer slide. Study after study have found that when students are out of school for the summer, they tend to backslide in terms of reading comprehension, and also advances in a whole slew of other related activities and fields, including math and, and other things in school. So we're trying to, um, foster that level of literacy and build up that program. So, you know, this slide, I'll show you a couple of statistics, uh, for the last six years. And, uh, you'll see some numbers are a little bit different and a little bit skewed for COVID, obviously, uh, when we did transition to primarily an online program. And those are just some general numbers about the impact that the, that we're having with the community. Any child can participate, and it goes up, uh, through adults as well. So we essentially have four different programs within that we run. One is for babies and toddlers, and then one is for the kiddos up from about four to eleven. Teens from eleven to nineteen, and adults are nineteen and up. And another thing to point out is the importance of those dates right there, the ages. We have, we provide overlap between four and eleven and nineteen, so that we're giving, uh, the patron an opportunity to decide if they would rather do, participate in the younger or the older, depending on kind of where they are in development. So it's a really good thing to do. So they, uh, generally we participate in a program nationally called iRead through the state of Iowa. And then, um, they come up with different, uh, themes and decorations that are more appealing for those different age groups. So this first one is for the babies and toddlers. Uh, and again, it keeps that same theme. But it's done by Dave Pilkey, who is a very, very, very popular children's author. He does Captain Hunter Pants. And so they commissioned him to do the artwork, and, uh, that's the engagement artwork for the, the littlest users. And so they commissioned him to do the artwork, and that's the engagement artwork for the littlest users.
By the way, Captain Underpants is one of the most fan books.
That is another one that typically shows up in the top 10 fan books as well.
My 50-year-old grandson said, why?
Like, those people are ignorant.
This is for the elementary age, so 4 to 11. And again, it's a lot of fun, playful activities, reading and getting outside, just exploring. This is for the teenagers, again, same thing, a little bit more mature. And then the next one is for adults, and this was kind of a mission match.
What's the adult? I think you're going to talk more about it, but I didn't listen to where there was adult.
Yep, so adults can participate in the program as well. We found that especially if the adult is a parent or caregiver for their child, if they're participating in the process, it really models that positive behavior, and then they like to emulate that, and then it's a shared activity they can do together as well.
Nice, thank you.
This is what the reading card looks like, you know, you'll have a little bit of information back about how to participate and to sign up. The way the system works, we do have tickets that they receive, and they can sign up and participate online through Beanstack, which is a website or a Beanstack app, and this just gives you a little bit of information about that. As they complete tickets, or as they complete activities by reading, the goal is to read and log every day that they read. They can get a ticket, and then also by doing activities. So some of those are library programs, some of those are programs that we partner with the city, and other activities for them to get out of the community and do fun and exciting things. And the more tickets they get, they can enter those tickets into drawings to then receive prizes. So those are some of those incentives built in.
Is the city, are there any city partners or businesses partnering with this, as far as the incentives go?
As far as the incentives go, right now, that's primarily done through subsidized by the Friends, by the donation they give to the library on an annual basis. That's something we've researched in the past, and I'm sure it's something we're always open for doing. If we could get a signature sponsor, for example, that would give us $20,000 a year, we might be able to give every child that participates a book, for example, for them to start building their own library. That would be a high goal for us to achieve. That's a good question. So this is what it looks like on the backside, and again, you can log with just a paper, or you could do it in an online or the app, or you could do both if you'd like as well, depending what you like. There's some functionality that's really great in the app that's really easy to use. You can have a timer, a start and stop, it'll log things for you, and that's where you can really playfully get badges. It has some of that gamification. It gets some, some children excited about it, because they want to get the rewards as they're participating in the program. And then there's also the scratch off as well, so they can color it in, or they can check it off, or they can be however creative they would like to.
Gamification?
Gamification, that's a word, yeah, yeah. So it's, it's tricking, it's, it's tricking kids into having fun with that learning activity.
I understand.
So this is a fun slide right here. We have a couple of staff members that are trying to do as many things at once as they possibly can on this list of 75 activities. Any guesses on which activities they might be doing?
Watching the clouds.
Yep, that's one.
Camping.
Yep, the camping.
Ice cream.
Reading with a flashlight.
Reading with a flashlight, yep.
Listening to something.
Yep, yep, so they do the same.
Listening to audiobook.
Yep, because reading counts in a variety of formats, so it could be graphic novels, books, magazines, newspapers, audiobooks, et cetera.
Oh, and they built it for them, and they're reading it.
Yeah.
Yep. So next slide will show you some of what they're doing.
Looks like they're building a fire in the.
Sending the library on fire.
Yes. And this slide, it was right before Fairmount converted to the Burnout. And the next slide. So here's an example. The next couple of slides are for adult activity badges as well, and where it has that little icon that's a kind of a tent, and some camping gear. That is specific for this year. In years past, that's just something that the others are wanting that we might do, like listening to an audiobook. An audiobook is not specific to the theme, but these ones are specific to the theme. So reading it apart, for example. Each one of those are just activities you can check off. There's a few more examples. And by a few, there's like 40. There's a lot of activities. We're trying to get a lot of opportunities, and a lot of fun, fun stuff to participate.
And they get a badge for each?
They can get a ticket, and in some cases, badges in the Beanstack app as well. So this will show you what the, how to log days in the Beanstack app, so you can kind of see what that does. So you can have readers, and it's going through on the little smartphone, so you can kind of see right now of what that looks like for the user perspective on how they can participate in the process.
Can a family, can a family have more than one person in the app, so you can keep your record amongst?
So this one example has two family members that are listed there, Emily and Watson. There's an ISBN function on it, so you can just scan the barcode on the back of the book, and it'll usually bring it right up, and then you can go to the log and track that way as well. So really easy to either log and quick complete the book, or log readings you're going through and do a timer.
It's just better than doing internet compliance with those city tests that we have to do. Like, what's wrong with this picture?
Jeff, I, I appreciate the fact that among the various options you had listed there, there were a series of them where you were, for example, referring to Fe- February, or Panavir, or other city amenities.
Absolutely.
I think making sure that we do that is an important thing.
Yeah, yeah, great, Tom. We're always trying to find that synergy with our community partners, with the city. We're trying to tie in as much as we can.
Is there a dinosaur at Sunderbrook, or people doing that?
It said there was. I don't know if there are there?
There are.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
Lawyer on the knickknacks.
But we can skip past this one, just example how to log.
As the summer goes, I don't know if any of this is going to be up this summer, but you know, the parks down in the, kind of mostly Third Ward, but there are others, they're in, they're in the, the low modern and consensus tracks. A lot of them are getting new equipment this year, so I don't know if they'll be done, but maybe you could throw in, go swing on the new swings at Fejuary and, you know, and read a book.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I'm not sure it'll be in time for this.
That might be something for next year.
Yeah, exactly.
We do have one activity there for, I don't know about that specific thing, but at that location, yep.
Reading.
So here's some of the prizes, here's some examples for the babies and toddlers on what they can win potentially. And again, to be clear, we don't have the funding to provide a prize for every single participant, but we do try to give out as many as we can. Here's some examples for ages 4 to 11.
Maybe the Friends would want to fund that.
They're already giving us a lot. That would be, it would be great. Ideally, the biggest is to, if we can get books into the homes of children, so they can start building their home libraries, that would be the ideal.
So do you have one of each of these, or you're not going to be getting these? Just want to try to understand.
Oh, yeah, for like the quantities?
Yes.
Yeah, it depends. I believe for the adults, we have 30 prizes total. I think for the teens, we also have 30.
Okay.
So that, that'll give you kind of a sense. So it's not necessarily just limited to one prize, one person.
I guess.
Oftentimes, for the adults, this one, there's three options to get the adventure backpack, for example.
So what are the cost of these things?
Generally, we'll have a budget of up to $5,000 for...
For everything?
Total, for all, that includes all of our programming and the prizes.
Maybe the alderman would kick in some of their beautification funds to help give you some enhanced prizes. I'll send an email in and see if he'll let me.
Okay.
You know, if people each gave 200 bucks out of their, it's not a big amount per year we have, but they gave a couple hundred bucks, you might have $2,000 all of a sudden they add. So people can just kick in a little bit, and everybody loves the library, so.
It's true.
I'll ask.
Thank you, Mary.
So we do have the summer reading kickoff event. It's going to be on June 4th. It's going to be at Fairmount, and I believe it'll be from 10 to 2, or 11 to 1, so we're right around there. We're going to have a lot of fun activities there, and some prizes, and some fun giveaways. So if you are available at all on that date, I believe it's Saturday, June 4th, during, during the day, would be great to get there. I think we have a couple of partnerships with schools as well, so we have principals and superintendent and a dump tank. So that should be a lot of fun as well.
You're going to be in it, right?
I don't know, I don't think anybody's asking that yet, but I don't think it would care to dump the library director, we'll see. And here's a list of a couple of other activities that we're doing. So again, this one is for the children, teens, and we'll have the story times on a regular basis, we'll have series events, other teen programs. We've got a lot of things tied to specific to early literacy, and then some, some big, the special guest one, or some of the big, well-intended signature events. So we'll have some really cool, like the Stakes and Turtles program, it's going to be very well attended. Turtles, those are always fun. And extension either, right?
Turtles are actually really fun.
They are, yes, they are.
A lot of really cool things for, for teens as well. There's going to be...
Food is good.
What if pizza comes through?
It's always good. Yeah.
Yeah, so. Thanks, yeah. Yeah, so the teen programs, there's some camp brunches, which are kind of overviews of that particular topic. So that second one is Drag Queens, so we're going to have some information that's getting driven by the teens. The Teen Advisory Board indicated they'd be interested in a program for that, so that's something that we'll be providing for the community, for the teenagers, if they'd like to attend. A lot of other fun things in there, origami, and dancing, TikTok stuff, just a whole slew of different things. The Kit Kat Challenge one, there's like 20 varieties of Kit Kat bars at this point. So it's a taste testing, playing case testing challenge, from getting to decide which Kit Kat you're using. So that would be pretty.
I don't know about that.
Casey, thanks for dealing with this. We're, we're using, we're using Canva for this presentation, and it's not working out all that. Uh, but that, I think that covered everything in the nutshell. Yeah, a lot of phonetics, a lot of things, but I want you to have an opportunity to look at summer reading, the goals, the purpose, and kind of that fill in, how it's, how it's going to work.
Yeah, that is a lovely hoop. Who set this up? How many?
We got a lot of great, great staff that, that work together on this, our youth services and programming committee, the teen.
So it gets bigger every summer, or?
Yep.
This looks really big.
It's huge. Yeah, it's huge, a lot of stuff. Yeah.
It's better than just saying, oh, come to the board, you know, then, I mean, you, look at this, what we have. That's great.
Yeah, they do a lot of great work.
Yeah, I would just add that, as I mentioned before, that the Friends has made it quite clear that their number one priority is supporting early literacy, which is certainly programs intended to do as far as trying to prioritize funding or other activities. The Friends is continuing to try to make that the number one priority.
And we honestly could not do this without the Friends' support and helping with that. It's huge. Oh, and then decorations. We're going to have lots of decorations up as well. Some of the windows are going to be decorated that are related to the theme. You'll probably see tents that are going to be constructed in a couple of the facilities, which is a lot of fun things for people to do. So I would encourage you to sign up as well, if you'd like, and share with your family and friends, and it definitely, obviously, a little ones to get them reading during the summer.
Malvika has some texts to us.
Can you hear me?
Oh, she's saying graduation party's on June 4th.
I have three.
Can you hear me?
Do you?
Can you hear?
Okay, so the, can one share the badges online? They're not shareable, per se, they're just within the Beanstack app. If anybody wanted to, they could copy and paste them and share them that way, but it's not like an online badging program, if that makes sense.
Do they know the hours for the 4th?
What's that?
What are the hours for the 4th?
I'd say it's 10 to 2, or 11 to 1.
I can look that up.
Yeah. Let's see, I'll check on that calendar of events, we can get that appropriate here.
Good for you, you're a little professional.
Oh, no, you're all staring at me.
I know. Maybe it's nonstop, awesome.
And if we don't find it today, we'll make sure we send an email with that information.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
10 to 4.
10 to 4, on 4th.
On Saturday, June 4th.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for that very informative program. Now we're at that point, is there any, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Craig makes a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Sylvia, it's second, so all those in favor? We have to do a roll. Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Malvika?
Yes.
Yes. Craig, yes. Sylvia? And I vote yes for adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.